Okay, members of the Board of Trustees, please respond present when you hear your name. Chairperson Thompson.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Sandra Wilken. Wait to see, trustee Arvinides.
Present.
Trustee Berger. Thought I saw him, but okay, trustee Clark. Trustee Clark, okay, trustee Cortez Vasquez. Trustee Ferrer.
Here.
And I see trustee, I see trustee Wilken, by the way.
Yep, I see her now too. Trustee Wilken will mark you present and then trustee Berger as well. Trustee Kim.
Present.
Trustee Lenares Garcia.
Present.
Trustee Mojica.
I'm looking at him.
I mean too. Trustee Oberfil.
Present.
Trustee Palacio.
Present.
Great. Trustee O'Donnell Tormey.
Present.
Trustee Sunshine. Think is on the phone. Trustee Vivalo. Not yet. Okay, and welcome to the new Chair of the University Faculty Senate, trustee Verzani, John Verzani.
Present.
Welcome. And also, welcome to our other new trustee, the Chairperson of the University Student Senate, Salamatu Dumbaya. Welcome.
Thank you, Gail. Dumbuya.
Dumbuya, thank you. And thank you for correcting me.
And welcome.
And Angelo, I see we will mark you present, trustee Vivalo. That's great. You have a call, Bill.
All right, this public meeting of the City University of New York's Board of Trustees is now called to order.
Pursuant to the New York State Legislature's recent extension of the suspension of required in-person meetings upon the Open Meetings Law, this meeting is being held remotely via video conference with access to the public session available on the CUNY Board of Trustees website. A copy of the calendar and agenda of items is also available online at the CUNY Board of Trustees website. Additional items may be added during the meeting, and as a reminder, please mute so we can ensure that everyone can hear. I will now take a roll call attendance for members of the Chancellery. Members of the Chancellery, please respond present when you hear your name. Chancellor Matos Rodriguez.
Present.
General Counsel and Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs, Derek Davis.
Present.
Great. Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Dan Lemons for his last meeting.
Present.
Great, and I think Wendy Hansel has joined, she's watching on the, through the website, so welcome Wendy. Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer Hector Batista.
Presente.
Senior Vice Chancellor for Institutional Affairs, Strategic Advancement, and Special Counsel Glenda Grace.
Present.
Interim Vice Chancellor and Chief Financial Officer Christina Chiappa.
Present.
Senior Vice Chancellor for Labor Relations Pamela Silverglack.
Present.
Interim Vice Chancellor and University Chief Information Officer Anne Roast. Okay, Vice Chancellor for Communications and Marketing Maite Yunko.
Present.
Vice Chancellor of Human Resources Management Dorian Gloria.
Present.
Vice Chancellor for Facilities and Construction Management Mohammed Atallah.
Present.
Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs Denise Maybank.
Present.
And Vice Chancellor for Advancement James Gallo.
Present.
Terrific. It's all you, Bill.
Okay, thanks. Pursuant to the New York State Legislature's recent extension of the suspension of required in-person meetings under Open Meetings Law, the Board of Trustees did not convene its April 11th, 2022 Staten Island Borough hearing, or its May 6th, 2022 Queens Borough and Public Hearing in Person. Instead, the Office of the Secretary accepted written testimony, statements, and video from concerned individuals via email at hearings@cuny.edu. For the Staten Island hearing on April 11th, there were three videos and eight written submissions. Students shared positive experiences attending CSI, including praise for the Childcare Center, research opportunities, CSI's Center for Student Accessibility, and the important role the Office of Student Life has at the College of Staten Island. One submission from CSI Student Body President expressed concerns about communications between the administration and students, infrastructure, and the effectiveness of CUNY First in relation to the tracking and distribution of student activity fee funding. For the May 6th Queens hearing, a total of three written and one video testimonies were submitted. Members of the Queens community applauded the value of Queens College for students and the community. On behalf of the entire Board of Trustees, I'd like to give a warm welcome to two new trustees that Gail just did. Professor John Verzani has been elected as Chair of the University Faculty Senate and will be joining us for a two-term or two-year term. And correct me if I am wrong, Salamatu Dumbaya. Correct me?
Dumbuya.
Dumbuya.
Salamatu Dumbuya.
It is a pleasure having you. She's been elected as the Chair of the University Student Senate and will be joining us as a trustee as well. With Professor Verzani's election, Martin Burke has completed two two-year terms as Chair of the University Faculty Senate and member of the Board of Trustees. Martin, we'd all like to say thank you for your extended service during some very difficult times, and your wisdom and dedication will be long remembered. I'd like to offer a personal thanks, and I know I speak for my colleagues in saying thank you for your service. On behalf of the entire Board of Trustees, I'd like to welcome our new Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Wendy Hansel. We all look forward to working with you on the important work of the university and meeting you in person very soon. On that same note, on behalf of the entire Board of Trustees, I'd like to say thank you to the outgoing interim Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost, Dan Lemons. Dan, you are escaping us. Twice, you stepped up to help the university. First as an interim President of Lehman College, and then as interim Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost, after a long and distinguished career as part of the faculty at City College. Your dedication and commitment to the university has been unwavering, and we are forever, all of us are forever grateful. You're really retiring? It says enjoy your well-deserved retirement. You're really retiring? I'm looking shocked.
Really doing that, sure.
This spring has been incredibly busy time for the trustees with the conclusion of three searches. And again, I've mentioned this before to my colleagues. Let me thank all of you for your tireless dedication to helping to find talented leaders for our schools. It is not easy. It is one of the more important things that we do. And all of us have served over a period of time on multiple committees. So I just want to say to all of my colleagues on the board, thank you. Public doesn't know, very few people understand how much time, how much work it requires. And all of you put the time and the work and the concern and the dedication in. So I just wanted to say to my colleagues, thank you so much. Thank you for your leadership and making sure that CUNY moves forward. And I know I speak for all of my colleagues when I say that we're excited to participate in commencement season in person, which began last week with the CUNY Law Ceremony. Like all graduates across the country, the class of 22 should be praised for their perseverance, resiliency, and bravery during these unprecedented times. Congratulations, and it is a return, you know, for us. It's one of the high points of any college career. One of the high points for all of us each year in seeing our students graduate. So, you know, we're going back to a little bit more of a normal environment. I know we're all looking forward to it, and to all of our graduates this year, congratulations. With that, let me go to the Chancellor for his report, Chancellor Matos Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chair Thompson. Trustees, Presidents, Vice Chancellors, it is good to be here with you today as we near the end of our spring semester and another eventful academic year. The weeks since our last meeting have been quite eventful and in a good way, and I'm happy to update you on the hard work that has been done. I join our Board Chair in welcoming our two new trustees, Professor Verzani, who we've worked very closely with in his previous capacity, particularly in the Fiscal Affairs Committee. It's great to have you here with us. And the student trustee, Asayemato Dumbuya. So, great to have you here, and wish you also very good luck with the end of the semester work, which I know that it's very important to you, right? And we want to make sure that GPA remains healthy and good so you can continue to do this, this, this work. And I do echo the Chair's gratitude to the former faculty trustee, Martin Burke, fellow historian. I know he was dying to go back and hit the archives and hit the books again. So thank you so much, Martin, for being such a great trustee and really a wonderful colleague in these very, very challenging years. This month, we kicked off what is going to be a year-long commemoration of CUNY's 175th anniversary. The mission of the university to offer an accessible and quality education to all New Yorkers was born on May 7th, 1847, when the Free Academy received its charter from the New York State Legislature. The Free Academy will later be renamed the City College of New York, which continues to represent opportunity today along with our 24 other campuses. I invite you to please check out our new anniversary webpage, which includes a wealth of information about our university's proud origin, story, and history, and our illustrious alumni and faculty. We are also very excited. We were very excited in the evening of Saturday, May 7th, when the iconic Empire State Building lit up New York in our blue and special anniversary goal to help us feathingly kick off the celebration. The anniversary provides opportunities to reflect on our past, but I also see it as an occasion to cheer for the future of our university and our city, to which my, which in my eyes looks as bright as those colorful lights. One source of my optimism is a very strong vote of confidence we are receiving from our state and city leaders. Weeks after our last meeting, Governor Hochul signed a state budget that includes a significant year-over-year increases of the kind we haven't seen in many years and probably decades, amounting to an additional $1.2 billion all told. This money would enable us to hire 540 new full-time faculty, making good progress toward an objective that I established as a priority for my administration. It also allows us to expand mental health services, childcare centers, nursing programs, and other student supports, including the Vital Seek Student Opportunity Program. It also includes $965.8 million in capital funds for critical maintenance, needed upgrades, and expansions of facilities at our campuses. Governor Hochul's expansion of the Tuition Assistance Program, TAP, and especially its extension to part-time students could be a game changer for thousands who were forced to forego college or stop out during the past two years. We are also deeply thankful to the governor for her leadership in extending TAP for workforce credentials. She recognized early the profound impact that this will have, particularly for those who stand to benefit from the non-degree workforce training that is offered by our community colleges. The investment, the investments in the adopted fiscal year 2023 budget signal our state leader's firm belief in the positive impact that we make in helping many thousands of New Yorkers realize their hopes and dreams in contributing to the state's equitable economic revitalization and supporting a wide range of cutting-edge research that can improve the lives of millions here and around the nation and the world. We again express our gratitude to Governor Hochul for his strong leadership and to Senate Majority Leader Stuart Cousins, Assembly Speaker Histi, Senate High Education Chair Stavinsky, Assembly Higher Education Chair Glick, and their legislative colleagues for making clear their belief in CUNY's impact. Mayor Adams and City Council Speaker Adams, both proud CUNY alumni, deliver news of their own that signals an affirmation of CUNY's value as an engine of inclusive economic mobility and a driver for New York's recovery. The mayor announced a $5 million commitment to our workforce training initiatives, a web of efforts to improve the interconnected economic prosperity of individuals and businesses across New York City. The city is making it possible for us to operate a new internship program this summer as part of the Mayor Adams' commitment to connect 100,000 youth to summer employment. CUNY Career Launch will pay 2,000 ambitious and talented 18- to 24-year-old undergraduates to boost capacity and bring new ideas to companies, nonprofits, and public sector employers across our five boroughs. CUNY Career Launch will give businesses, organizations, and government agencies the chance to hire their next generation of workers, and thanks to the generous financial support from both the mayor and the city council, this will absolutely be free to employers. I want to introduce Dr. Reyes Armento, who I recently appointed interim Vice Chancellor for Enrollment Management, a newly created position that I felt was increasingly important to help CUNY navigate key challenges on our progress and success. Vice Chancellor Armento joined us earlier this year from Lehman College, where she served as the College Vice President of Enrollment Management and as Associate Provost. She brings more than three decades of experience in higher education, including a long and productive stint at LaGuardia Community College, and a deep well of knowledge about the many factors that influence a person's desire to begin college and impact their potential to succeed. We are also beginning, and I'm so proud to announce, a new round of awards from the Chancellor's Emergency Relief Fund. You will recall that we launched this effort in 2020 and eventually raised more than $10 million from philanthropic and individual donors and disbursed a total of $6.2 million of that money to about 12,400 students over six previous waves of awards. In previous rounds, we have prioritized students who were near graduation and undocumented students who were not initially eligible to receive federal emergency relief funds. Now, we're in the process of notifying our student parents, who are registered for summer sessions, that they might be eligible to receive an award to cover the cost of their tuition and expenses. We plan to distribute, to disburse the other $3 million supporting the student parents. Let me shift gears a little bit and fill you in on some good CUNY news stories for this spring. We are proud to share that the Morgan Stanley Institute for Inclusion's Equity in Education and Career Consortium has invested $2.1 million in CUNY's ASAP program as part of a multi-year program to support community college students from low and moderate income communities and to address the systemic inequities these students face in education and career outcomes. This funding represents another acknowledgement of the effectiveness of our award-winning ASAP program. Last week, I joined Deputy Mayors Wright and Torres Springers and Dean Elmo Handes from the Security School of Public Health to launch an exciting, forward-thinking venture called the New York City Pandemic Response Institute. In partnership with Columbia University, the institute will tap into the proven expertise of our Graduate School of Public Health on urban public health. The PRI, as it's known for short, will collaborate with the city's health and emergency management departments along with dozens of nonprofits, community organizations, corporate partners, and more to prepare New York City to be able to respond to future public health emergencies. We are celebrating proudly the 25th anniversary of CUNY's Citizenship Now program. This year, and two, and two weeks ago, the program held the largest in-person citizenship application assistance event in the country since the beginning of the pandemic at John Jay College in partnership with the New Americans Campaign. In just one day, 202 people left the John Jay campus knowing their eligibility for U.S. citizenship, many earning free waivers that would allow them to naturalize without charge. A week later, also at John Jay College, nearly 200 students, CUNY program organizers and immigration leaders and advocates, attended an immigrant student celebration in partnership with the Immigrant Student Success Centers at John Jay and Brooklyn College and with the support of the Dream.us Foundation, the largest college access and success program for dreamers. We have expanded CUNY's supportive offering for immigrant students, including undocumented students, unifying resources that are available to these students across the universities, 25 colleges under a newly centralized office with a dedicated leader. I named Dr. Cynthia Carvajal to serve as interim director of the Immigrant Student Success Office and newly created position dedicated to bring uniformity to the resources provided across the university. And I commend Vice Chancellor Maybank for being an advocate for the establishment of this important office. I am also delighted to congratulate three of our schools, Alstos Community College, Kingsborough Community College, and LaGuardia Community College, who were named as semifinalists for the 2023 Aspen Prize for Community College Excellence. This is a prize that President Barack Obama once compared to the Oscars for great community colleges. Our three schools are among an elite group of 25, chosen from over 150 institutions, and the only semifinalist from New York State. After site visits and the evaluation of additional data, the list will be narrow, will be narrowed to 10 finalists in early June, and the Aspen Prize winner will be announced next spring. And I have no doubt that it will be one of our three schools. Two of our faculty members have been awarded prestigious 2022 Guggenheim Fellowships, distinguished lecturer Edward Ted Winmer from Macaulay-Donos College and Lisa Corrine Davis at Hunter College, along with two Hunter alumni who received the fellowship. Also in awards news, three of our own have earned $90,000 awards from the Competitive Source Fellowship for New Americans. We also just last week found out an astonishing seven of our community college students who attend Bronx, Kingsborough, and LaGuardia Community College were selected as recipients of the Jack Kent Cooke Foundation undergraduate transfer scholarship program. May, as many of you know, is AAPI Heritage Month, but we began our observance a little early. Last month, I called a roundtable of CUNY's Asian-American and Pacific Islander communities with Joyce Moy, who recently retired from leading our Asian-American and Asian Research Institute. Students, faculty, and staff spoke candidly about the issues their communities have been facing, which have only grown amid the increased wave of anti-Asian violence that has persisted alongside the pandemic, and shared their ideas for the thoughtful evolution of AAPI studies at CUNY. Last week, in the last week of April, I also led a delegation of presidents and deans to Israel to participate in a week-long Scholars as a Bridge Builders Tour of the Country, a trip that was organized by the Jewish Community Relations Council of New York. As a historian, I had long awaited to visit this region that is the birthplace and locus of so much history and heritage. We engage with scholars, journalists, activists, and experts from diverse perspectives. I'm especially inspired by the visit to three institutes of higher learning, Hebrew University, Tel Aviv University, and Safir College. We learn about the complexities of Israel's higher education system and the challenges of educating its diverse population. Such experiences are key for university leaders and administrators as we're driven to expand the education's capacity to create goodwill and dialogue between members of distinct communities with opposing points of view. Lastly, we are holding a very important and solemn event tomorrow morning, a City College Great Hall, a CUNY Day of Remembrance in memory of the lives our university community has lost to COVID-19. Chairperson Thompson and I will both be there along with a number of our presidents. Everyone is welcome to attend, and the event will also be live streamed. We all recall how hard-hit our university was by the pandemic from its earliest wave, and how much we have yearned to pay respects and help each other grieve. I'm comforted that the time has come when an in-person tribute is possible. Even as we revisit the sadness of these years, we see a future in which the pandemic, even if not fully behind us, becomes ever more manageable. Commencement season is also upon us, and this year provides another sign of the long distance we have traveled together as it marks our long-awaited return to in-person ceremonies. As you know, this is my favorite time of the year, and this year will be doubly so. As I plan to attend eight in-person ceremonies, I am so very much looking forward to the sights and sound of happy students and their loved ones. And one more, one more note before I conclude. Chairman Thompson alluded that at the end of this month, my dear friend, Dan Lemons, who took over the role of Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost, will end his tenure in that position. If there is truly a CUNY citizen, it is Dan Lemon, who served the past three years in pinch-eating capacities, probably the most three difficult years in the university's history, with incredible distinction and contributed so much to the university's planning, both here centrally and doing a superb job two years at Lehman. He has been, now he's a retired Ameritrade professor in, in, in the university, and also had positions of leadership at the Graduate Center and City College. Dan, personally, I would miss you. I know everybody here will miss your double-o-seven, cool, calm, and collected approach to handling all situations. If somebody deserves a break to ride the motorcycle, do some woodwork, it's you, and again, your friend, and we'll try to make it easy for you not to become a stranger, and I will say no more. And with that, Mr. Chairperson, I conclude my report.
Thank you, Chancellor. Let's now turn to the items requiring a vote today. Given that board members are participating remotely and we cannot see everyone on the screen at the same time, I'll read the resolutions and ask for members to respond only if you'd like to abstain or oppose an item. Otherwise, your vote will be recorded as a yes vote. If you're voting no or abstaining, please state your name and vote. Additionally, if you wish to second an item or have any questions, please state your name first for the record, and let's try to avoid speaking over one another. For clarity and coordination, I'll ask the secretary to read all of the items. Gail?
Got myself off move. Item number one, approval of minutes of the regular board meeting and executive session of March 21st, 2022.
I'd like to move that item. Do I have a second?
Er, second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item number two is the Committee on Fiscal Affairs. Item 2A is a resolution to authorize a procurement of bar exam preparation courses and a waiver of tuition and fees for third-year law school students attending the courses. The CUNY School of Law is seeking to procure a bar exam prep course and to waive tuition and fees for third-year law school students attending the courses. The no-cost bar exam preparation program will be a benefit to students and likely to improve bar exam passage rates, influence standing in the national law school rankings, and have a positive influence on enrollment and tuition revenues. Universities requesting the Board of Trustees to authorize a procurement of bar exam preparation courses in an amount not to exceed. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and a waiver of tuition and fees for students attending the courses.
I'd like to move that item. You have a second?
Ergor, seconds.
Any discussion on this item? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item two B is a resolution to authorize a contract with Outfront Media Inc. for digital and print advertising. As a result of previously declining enrollment rates due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And to increase awareness and enrollment, the university is seeking a contract with Outfront Media Inc. To place digital and print advertising with the MTA on subway cars, platforms, and entrances. Placing advertisements with the MTA system with its large presence across the New York City metropolitan area. And five million daily riders will allow the university to effectively achieve the campaign's strategic goals. Outfront Media Inc. is the exclusive entity responsible for handling advertising placements on behalf of the MTA. University is seeking a five-year contract with Outfront Media Inc. with a total expenditure not to exceed ten million dollars.
Like to move that item. May I have a second?
Ergor, seconds.
Discussion on this item? Any questions? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item two C is a resolution to extend the existing contract with Applied DNA Clinical Labs LLC. For the provision of campus-wide COVID-19 surveillance testing. The university is currently in a one-year contract with Applied DNA Clinical Labs LLC. For surveillance testing services as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. Due to possible surges, as we have now, and cases due to the Omicron variants or other highly transmittable COVID-19 variants. And as a result of growing in-person presence of faculty, students, and staff. The university has demonstrated need of continued COVID-19 mitigation measures. The university is requesting to extend the contract for an additional twelve months. Commencing with the expiration of the existing contract at a cost not to exceed the original thirty-five million dollars.
Like to move that item. Do we have? May I have a second?
Ergor, seconds.
Questions or discussion on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item two D is a resolution to approve a policy on academic excellence fees. Academic excellence fees are used to financially support. The unique needs of specific college graduate programs and degrees by increasing. The quality of programs offered and adding value to student experiences. The university currently has written practices and requirements on academic excellence fees. And to continue to ensure that the fees are being spent and revenues are being used appropriately. Universities requesting to formalize these practices and requirements into a policy.
Like to move this item. May I have a second?
Ergor, seconds.
Discussion on this item? Any questions? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item two E is a resolution to approve the FY 2023 CUNY Investment Portfolio Spending Rate. On an annual basis, the university is required to analyze its investment portfolio. To determine the appropriate spending rate for the upcoming fiscal year. This activity is a requirement under the New York Prudent Management of Institutional Funds Act, NIMIPFA. For fiscal year 2023, the university is proposing a four percent spending rate, which is consistent with the prior year.
Like to move this item. May I have a second?
May I have a second?
Any discussion on this item or questions? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item number three is the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research Activities. Item three A is a resolution regarding the establishment of the Department of Exercise Sciences and Recreation. The Department of Health Promotion and Nutrition Sciences. And the Department of Health Equity Administration and Technology. And the closing of the Department of Health Sciences at Lehman College. Currently, eleven health science programs and one certificate program are housed in the Department of Health Sciences at Lehman College. After discussions with the faculty, department chair, and school leadership. Lehman has resolved that three academic units can better serve the university and the community. The discussion to separate the Department of Health Sciences began in 2014, but was stalled due to transitions in leadership at the college.
Like to move this item. May I have a second?
Arvin, eighty-second.
Any discussion on this item or questions? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item three B is a resolution regarding the establishment of an accelerated second-degree nursing education program. Leading to the Bachelor of Science degree in nursing at Medgar Evers College. The proposed program will fulfill the college's goal to expand its nursing and nursing care offerings in Central and South Brooklyn. It will also allow individuals with existing non-nursing bachelor's degree opportunities. To transition into a career in nursing, achieve economic equity in a profession that is in high demand. While serving their community during a pandemic.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Ergor, second.
Any discussion on this item or questions? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Items three C one through three C sixteen are all resolutions to grant honorary degrees. I will read each one. Item three C one is a resolution to award Celia Elena Rouse with an honorary degree from Baruch College. Item three C two is a resolution to award Lamaya Gimbalwi an honorary degree from Brooklyn College. Items three C three and three C four are resolutions to award Anthony Fauci and Stanley Nelson. With honorary degrees from the City College of New York. Items three C five is a resolution to award Elba Cabrera an honorary degree from Ostos Community College. Items three C six and three C seven are resolutions to award Natalia Mendez and Cleo Silvers with honorary degrees from Lehman College. Items three C eight and three C nine are resolutions to award Ellen Ochoa and Faith Ringold. With honorary degrees from the John Jay College of Criminal Justice. Item three C ten is a resolution to award Jessica Ware an honorary degree from the Macaulay Honors College. Items three C eleven and three C twelve are resolutions to award Earl Monroe and Sandra Richards with honorary degrees. From Medgar Evers College. Items three C thirteen and three C fourteen are resolutions to award Danny Bursting and Arturo Casa de Val. With honorary degrees from Queens College. Items three C fifteen is a resolution to award Kianga Yamata Taylor an honorary degree from the CUNY School of Law. Item three C sixteen is a resolution to award Vivek Murthy an honorary degree. From the CUNY School of Public Health and Health Policy.
I'd like to move these items. May I have a second?
Kim, second.
Any discussion on these items or questions?
Yeah, I have I have a question. It's Angelo. We were on three C fifteen. Didn't that happen already? I mean, didn't the law?
The CUNY Law School graduation was on May thirteenth, and it was approved by the committee. So they went ahead and granted the honorary degree pending.
Committee approved the.
The committee approved all of these, yes.
Any other questions? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. Those items are approved.
Item three D is a resolution regarding the approval of the actions in the CAPRA Dashboard. Routine academic matters, local academic policies, and course inclusions. In the university's general education program are presented to the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research in summary form. Introduced in October 2019, the CAPRA Dashboard makes it possible for trustees to interact with this summary data.
I'd like to move that item. May I have a second?
Ergor, second.
Any discussion on this item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Okay, item number four is the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration. Item number four A is a resolution to approve the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration Report. The May CFSA report contains actions entered into the CUNY System of Record. Between January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two and March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. The report contains a total of two hundred and sixty-seven actions. Including sixty appointments and reappointments with tenure, a hundred and sixty-seven fellowship leaves. And twenty-four ECP interim and regular appointments.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Kim, second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now vote. Please only. Oops, yes.
Yes, not a discussion, but I wanted to just put a reminder. That we have work that the committee has asked, excuse me, I'm so. The committee has asked CUNY. Human Resources Administration Chancellor Dorian Grace, as well as. That team to give us a little to contextualize some of those items for us moving forward. At the next meeting, so that we can get a better sense of what that volume of work truly is, all right?
Okay, excellent. Makes sense. Any other comments? All right, we'll we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose.
Item four C is a resolution to approve the memorandum of agreement between the City University of New York and the Professional Staff Congress, CUNY. To include research professor titles in the 2017-2023 collective bargaining agreement. In 2020, the Professional Staff Congress for CUNY, the PSC, filed a petition at the New York State Public Employment Relations Board. To represent the research professors in collective bargaining. On September twenty-one, twenty twenty, the university agreed to recognize the Professional Staff Congress, CUNY. As the collective bargaining representative of the research faculty. Subsequent to the recognition of the PSC as the collective bargaining representative. The parties engaged in extensive negotiations over the last fifteen months. To reach an agreement on salary increases and other terms and conditions of employment for the research faculty. The parties have reached a tentative agreement that covers all the terms and conditions of employment. For the research professors incorporates the titles into the party's 2017-2023 collective bargaining agreement. Subject to ratification by the union.
Like to move this item. May I have a second?
Ergor, second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item four C is a resolution to appoint Elaine Reese as Commissioner of the Civil Service System of the City University of New York. Elaine Reese is currently serving as Chair of the CUNY Civil Service Commission. Where she was first appointed as a commissioner on June first twenty, I'm sorry, June first, two thousand and six. Ms. Reese shall serve for a term of six years to commence on June first, twenty twenty-two. And expire on May thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. The reappointment of Ms. Reese for a statutory six-year term. Will enable the City University of New York to continue to operate under the rules and regulations. Of its Civil Service Commission as approved by the New York State Education Law and as governed by the New York State Civil Service Law.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Arvin, eighty-second.
Okay, any discussion on this item? Any questions? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item four D is a resolution to amend the Brooklyn College Governance Plan. The Governance Plan of Brooklyn College was last amended and made effective by the Board of Trustees at its July one, twenty nineteen meeting. The amendments to the Brooklyn College Governance Plan are designed to update the Governance Plan. As the current plan was silent as to how amendments were to be approved. Henceforth, all amendments to the plan must be approved. By the Brooklyn College Policy Council by a two-thirds plus one vote. And by the president for submission to the Board of Trustees. The proposed amendment was approved by the Brooklyn College Policy Council on November third, twenty twenty-one. An adoption recommended by the president thereafter.
I'd like to move that item. May I have a second?
Ergor, second.
Okay, any discussion on this item? Any questions? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Items four E and four F are resolutions to award Manjukaswamy and Diane Greenfield. With early tenure at Queens College with an application of bylaw six point two point C two. Effective September first, twenty twenty-two.
I'd like to move the item. May I have a second?
May I have a second?
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? All right, we're gonna vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That those items are approved.
Item four G is a resolution to transfer faculty to three newly established departments. Within the School of Health Sciences, Human Services, and Nursing at Lehman College. This is the compendium resolution to the action just taken earlier. Eleven health science programs and one certificate program are housed in the Department of Health Sciences at Lehman College. After discussions with the faculty and current department chair, the college has resolved. That they can better serve the university and community by separating these programs into three separate academic departments.
I'd like to move the item. May I have a second?
Donald Tormy, second.
Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item four H is a resolution to name the Francis M. Webb Endowed Scholarship for Student Parents. At Eugenio Maria de Ostos Community College.
I'd like to move the item. May I have a second? Angelo, okay, thank you. Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item four I is a resolution to name the Cecil Inzendorf Adjunct Faculty Advancement Fund at Hunter College.
I'd like to move that item. May I have a second?
Ergor, second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item four J is a resolution to name the Dr. Charles R. Brown Wrestling Room at Hunter College.
I'd like to move that item. May I have a second?
May I have a second?
Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item four K is a resolution to name the William Vanden Hoogel FDR Elevator at Roosevelt House at Hunter College.
Like to move that item. May I have a second? Angelo, thank you. Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item number five is the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. Item number five A is a resolution to authorize roof replacements to the academic core building at York College. All fourteen roof sections of the academic core building at York College have exceeded their life expectancy. Are severely compromised and need replacement. The design of the replacements was completed in January twenty twenty-two. Excuse me, construction is anticipated to commence July twenty twenty-two. And be substantially completed by July twenty twenty-four. The board requests that the City University Construction Fund provide funding for the roof replacements in an amount. Up to twenty-two million dollars.
Like to move that item. May I have a second?
Oh.
Okay, any discussion on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item six is the Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs. Item six is the Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs. Item six A is a resolution to approve the award of the twenty twenty two Jonas Esau scholarships. In nineteen fifty-five, the Board of Estimate of the City of New York created the Jonas Salk Scholarships to honor the City College of New York graduate who developed the first anti-polio vaccine. The Jonas Salk Scholarships are awarded annually to graduates of the City University of New York senior colleges. The scholarships are awarded to students who have been accepted to a U.S. Medical School or Graduate School in pursuit of the M.D. and D.O. as well as a Ph.D. or a doctorate of science in biomedical, in biological sciences, and have performed scientific research as an undergraduate. Winners receive a total of eight thousand dollars over the course of four years to defray the cost of study for M.D. and D.O. degrees as well as doctoral degrees in biomedical sciences. The students' research papers are reviewed and recipients are selected for their potential to make significant contributions to medical and biomedical research by a committee of prominent physicians chaired by Dr. Arnold Melman, President of the Society of Salk Scholars. Since nineteen fifty-five, over five hundred students have been awarded the scholarship. This year, the Salk Scholarship will be awarded to the following students: Eric Dates, McCauley Honors College at Hunter College. No, sorry, Cian Pang at McCauley's Honor College at Hunter College, Joseph Idoku, City College of New York, Katsarina Milosevic, Baruch College, David Mushayev at Queens College, Leandro Pimentel Marcelino at City College of New York, Priya Singh at McCauley Honors College at Hunter College, and Kelly Versami from the City College of New York.
I'd like to move this item, may I have a second?
Second, McDonald, twenty.
Any discussion on this item? All right, we'll now vote, please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved. The Chancellor has asked the board to consider three additional resolutions. I'll ask the Secretary to reach each resolution for the record and we'll first vote to add the item and then take a vote on the item itself. Gail, could you please read the resolutions?
Yes, so item numbers, what will be added is item number seven is a resolution to appoint Richard White as Professional School Executive Council at the City University of New York. The resolution reads as follows: Whereas Richard White currently serves as the Vice Chancellor for the Office of Risk, Audit, and Compliance, whose mission is to assist in the planning, development, and implementation of policies and initiatives related to university-wide enterprise risk management investigations, audit, compliance, and federal Title IX regulations. And whereas in recognition of Mr. White's experience as an attorney, experience with executive leadership and corporate compliance, it is appropriate administratively and fiscally to appoint Mr. White to ensure Stella and Charles Gutman Community College, Craig Newmark Graduate School of Journalism, McCauley Honors College, and the School of Labor and Urban Studies have legal guidance on the issues arising in higher education. And whereas Mr. White holds a Juris Doctorate from Delaware Law School, a Bachelor's in Economics from Franklin and Marshall College, certificates in executive education from Harvard University's John F. Kennedy School of Government and Harvard Law School, and as Vice Chancellor has lectured for the New York City Chapter of the Association of Corporate Counsel, the National Association of College and University Attorneys, serves as a member on the MTA Inspector General Management Advisory Board, and serves as a standing member of the Bar Association of the City of New York Committee on Recruitment and Retention of Lawyers. And whereas Mr. White is admitted to practice in New York, New Jersey, DC, the Courts of the Southern and Eastern Districts of New York, and before the United States, United States Supreme Court, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approve the appointment of Mr. White as Professional School Executive Council at Stella and Charles Gutman Community College, Craig Newmark Graduate School of Journalism, and School of Labor and Urban Studies at McCauley Honors College, effective May seventeenth, twenty twenty two, and an annual salary of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The explanation is as follows: Mr. White brings over thirty years of experience as a lawyer and an executive. Mr. White will provide legal guidance on many challenging issues arising in the higher education context, including labor and employment, ethics, student issues, litigation, compliance, including Title IX, affiliation and contractual agreements, college governance, immigration, and fundraising. He will also serve as liaison for the four college units to the university's Office of General Counsel. The Chancellor highly recommends this appointment.
I make a motion to add item number seven to our agenda, may I have a second?
Kim, second.
A second.
Okay, thank you. That item has been added. I now would like to present item number seven, may I have a second for that?
A second, Angelo, keep it up.
Any discussion on this item? All right, we'll now vote, please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Chair? Can I, can I just add a word of gratitude to, to Richard White for the important work he did in, as being the Vice Chancellor for Risk and Compliance and getting that work going? And, and thank him also for now leading this important charge in providing legal assistance to four of our colleges, so I wanna appreciate the, the work done and the work to be done.
Thank you, Chancellor. Duly noted, and, and thank you, Richard, for a job well done.
Item eight, and what will be actually added as item eight is a resolution of appreciation for Interim Dean of the CUNY School of Law, Eduardo R.C. Capalong. And it reads as follows: Whereas since March twenty ninth, twenty twenty one, Edward R.C. Capalong has been serving as Interim Dean of the CUNY School of Law, where he has worked to ensure the critical work of the school continued uninterrupted during the search for the next dean of the CUNY School of Law. And whereas Eduardo Capalong is currently on leave from his position as Professor of Law and Director of the Lawering Program at CUNY School of Law, designed to stimulate various lawyering scenarios and place students in the roles of attorneys, clients, witnesses, judges, mediators, and others in three small experiential seminars. And whereas Eduardo Capalong's efforts during this period have allowed the university to appoint a new dean of CUNY, the CUNY School of Law, and he will return to his position as Professor of Law and Director of the Lawering Program at CUNY School of Law, effective July one, twenty twenty two. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approve a paid study leave for Eduardo Capalong in his position in the Executive Compensation Plan to allow for a reasonable transition from his interim dean responsibilities to his academic work, effective August twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, through January twenty fourth, twenty twenty three. And be it further resolved that the members of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York express their sincere thanks and appreciation to Eduardo Capalong for his service as interim dean to the CUNY School of Law and the City University of New York.
I'd like to make a motion to add item number eight to our agenda, may I have a second for that?
I said.
Thank you. That item has been added. I now present item number eight, may I have a second for that?
Second, old buffet.
Okay, any discussion on this item? All right, we'll now vote, please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's been approved.
So what will be added is item number nine.
Just again, a note, being, being interim is always a challenging task, even in the most normal of times and clearly, you know, during this past year of the pandemic. So when I wanna thank Dean Capalong for his work and, and he's, you know, been instrumentally helping us to set the ground for what we hope is a new chapter for our CUNY Law School on the leadership of Dean Sari.
Thank you, Chancellor.
So what will be added is item nine is a resolution to adopt executive compensation plan changes at the City University of New York. And it reads as follows: Whereas executive compensation plan resolutions in nineteen eighty-seven, nineteen ninety-four, and two thousand state quote that periodically, but no less frequently than every five years, the Board of Trustees shall review national peer data to compare and reassess its executive compensation salary plan, unquote. And whereas the salary plan was amended in nineteen ninety-four to link salary adjustments to general salary increases for New York State management confidential employees, and under the twenty twelve revised salary plan, increases to salary ranges continue to be tied to increases given to New York State management confidential employees. And whereas in accordance with this mandate, the university engaged the services of William and Mercer, William M. Mercer in two thousand and three, two thousand and six, twenty ten, and twenty twelve to update the market analysis previously performed. And whereas the Board of Trustees adopted a revised salary plan on June twenty-six, twenty seventeen, based on this market analysis. And whereas on December sixteenth, twenty nineteen, the Board of Trustees approved annual salary increases for all members of the Professional Staff Congress retroactive to April twentieth, twenty seventeen, and through November first, twenty twenty two. And whereas in accordance with the ECP approved by the Board of Trustees on June twenty-six, twenty seventeen, any modification of salaries within the ECP is at the discretion of the Board of Trustees and must be presented to the Board of Trustees for approval. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chancellor may grant a two percent salary increase to eligible members of the ECP retroactive to the start of the fiscal year, fiscal year twenty twenty one or July one, twenty twenty one. And be it further resolved that the Chancellor may grant an additional two percent salary increase to eligible members of the ECP at the start of the twenty twenty two fiscal year or July one, twenty twenty two. And be it further resolved that the Chancellor may grant salary increases consistent with those received by members of the ECP and on the same effective date to eligible classified managerial service employees who hold high-level managerial positions and titles excluded from representation by any collective bargaining unit. The explanation reads as follows: The Board of Trustees recognizes the importance of recruiting and retaining innovative, highly competent, accountable, ethical, and visionary leadership. The Board of Trustees further recognizes the competitive market-driven compensation for this leadership is necessary and critical to the long-term future success of the City University of New York and central to the Board of Trustees mandate to improve standards and promote accountability. The primary objective of the proposed increase is to build a compensation program that addresses the need to be competitive with the national and regional market, which acknowledges the complexity of a specific institution while promoting transparency and accountability. As such, the changing landscape of higher education coupled with the trustee's commitment to transparency dictates the university periodically evaluate the executive compensation plan to ensure that it supports the recruitment and retention of superior talent, encourages excellence in performance by its most senior officials, and adheres to the highest standards of transparency and accountability.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to add item number nine to our agenda, may I have a second? Thank you, Angelo.
Second.
That item has been added, and now, I'd like to now move item number nine, may I have a second for that?
May I ask you a second?
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion on the item? Any questions? All right, we'll now vote, please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved. There being no further business, I, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, thank you all so much, we are adjourned. Everybody stay safe.
Bye.
Take care.